Alright, it's 6:30. I'll call the meeting to order. We'll start off with a roll call of the members. Matt yet, myself, Chair, present. Susan Wood.
Present.
John Chris.
And here I am.
Phil Lindner.
Present.
Michael Bouchard is excused today. Molly McCann.
I'm here.
Neil McGyver. And alternates Bradford Pover.
Yep. Thanks Dan.
You were projecting really well, though, so.
Thank you.
It was fine, yeah.
Excellent. Thank you very much, all welcome. We'll start off with a review of the minutes from September 4th, Planning Board meeting.
I only had a question.
Yes.
Just a kind of a follow-up question more for Joseph. On page four, at the very last line, says that the Chair requested a more detailed table of affected roads and zoning for future discussion. I don't think that's in the packet today.
Correct, that is there. We have done that at this point.
It is there, okay.
Avery spun a lot on that, too, but it is not in the packet for this evening. Though I can certainly, we can certainly make that available to the Board.
That's great.
As we would like to move forward.
Okay.
Beautiful, thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
My second.
Of September 4th.
My second, sorry.
If there is no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions?
Abstention.
Abstention.
So we have enough to pass?
Oh geez. I also abstain. You're good, though.
Okay.
Perfect. Any abstentions?
You and me soon.
Just takes a majority of voters.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, we'll move on to item number four on the agenda, communications received by the Board.
Sure, I'll give a couple of quick communications here. So, following up from the conversation, communication I referenced at the last meeting, the 10-year plan hearings have been scheduled. So, that is with regards to the proposed NHDOT draft 10-year plan, which does remove the Smith Bridge Road project, that is, the draft plan does not include it. And also does not include the North Main Street Bike Ped and Realignment Project. So if anybody would like to weigh in on the proposed draft 10-year plan, that will be the item of discussion October 20th at 6:00 PM at the Pease Public Library. And if anybody wants more information on that, they can certainly contact us in the Planning Department. It's also available on the NHDOT 10-year plan webpage, they keep that pretty updated. Minor communication here, the members, the public members of the Economic Development Committee have been selected by the Select Board, and that committee, I expect an update soon on first meeting. I also have a very positive update following up from our conversation also at the last meeting. The Railroad Square Sharet application was approved, so Plan New Hampshire has given us a formal thumbs up that they would like to come to Plymouth, bring their expertise, their team, to help us engage with the community and help envision some future possibilities for that area. We don't have a point person yet, but once we do, have a point person from Plan New Hampshire who's working with us on it, they can help give us some guidance on how we should be moving forward to prepare for that on the Towns End. But, that is formally selected, we don't have any kind of date, any kind of certainty about timeline, other than that they said spring of next year, and I would expect perhaps later spring, because I think that's a better time to do it, but we'll have to wait and see what they have for availability. There are volunteers, so perhaps that, there might be some flexibility there. And then lastly, the six-word stories seem to have been a good success. We had those out around town in the various locations. Avery was able to get it out into the community in a couple of locations, too, which is great. All in all, we expect a little over 100 responses, which is really positive. Big, big success with the recycling center. That was our most popular location. About 50 responses came from the recycling center alone. So, it's a good, that was a good call, being able to put one there. And thanks to the recycling center, the library, the senior center, and Town Hall for hosting. Everybody who, who we asked was very gracious and let us set up these bulky displays in their place of business, and they were super positive, enthusiastic, and really happy that people liked them, at least 100-plus people liked them, enough to fill out a card. Those are my, those are my communications at this time.
May I ask a question about communications not received?
Sure.
Well, at least, at least, at least I presume not received.
Okay.
I believe we were supposed to receive notification, what, three or four months ago at this point, about the housing champions?
Oh, yeah.
The unfunded housing champions?
Yes.
And has anything happened there, or even a story about like what the new notification date might be, or anything?
Good question. So I recently checked our portal, and by recently, it was a few weeks ago, but in the scheme of, you know, the decision, the decision timeline, we were made aware of quite a bit after that still, and our request application is still listed as pending in the, in the portal. So really, no updates. We can always contact someone over there at BEA and see if they have any insight into that, or, you know, try to find something out from them. But at this time, you know, at least based on the information we can see in our application portal, it's still open, it's not formally accepted or declined.
Great, thank you. That's great news about the sharet.
Very exciting.
Exciting.
Definitely.
Superb.
Moving on to item number five on the agenda tonight, applications and public hearings. Joseph, we have no applications tonight, correct?
Correct. Yep.
Alright, excellent.
Just a couple of folks who reached out about conceptual consultations, but no applications.
Alright, we'll move on to item number six on the agenda, informational and pre-application reviews. We'll start off with the first one listed, Brandon Pike, Common Man Conceptual Consultation, 43 and 45 Main Street. Is Mr. Pike with us today?
Evening, yes, I am. I'm traveling, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine, thank you very much.
Excellent, yes, so I'm also with Warren, which I believe some of you know Warren, I think he's in the room?
Warren is in the room. Warren, would you like to come to the microphone? Thank you. Bear with us one minute, Brandon.
Absolutely.
Hi, Warren Lewis. I'm here, Brandon.
Excellent, excellent. Yeah, so thank you so much for letting us address the Board. You know, so, one of the things that Warren and I have been tasked to do is have a discussion about.
You know, what, what that looks like in that space. Knowing that the sharet's coming up, we thought this would be a great time to start the ball rolling with some ideas about, you know, some concepts about what we could put in there, and what would look good, and what, you know, based on town needs, et cetera, as well.
May I comment?
Please.
Just for clarity, the space being 43 slash 45 Main Street, which is next to the Flying Monkey?
Correct.
Correct, yes, absolutely, correct, I'm sorry about that.
That's alright.
Which is now vacant.
Which is now vacant.
Uh, yes, slightly.
Recently demoed.
It's quite vacant.
Recently demoed.
Yes.
I think we're in the best position to offer feedback and thoughts on conceptual ideas that are brought to us. I don't think it's appropriate for us to actually give you ideas on what could potentially happen there, or what we, the town would want to see there. The good news is...
Yeah, I think, sorry, didn't mean to, sorry, didn't mean to talk over you. It's a little bit of a delay, sorry, I apologize. Yeah, I think, I think for this discussion, you know, we have, you know, Warren, Warren has an idea that we were going to talk to you about as well, but it's more of a collaborative as well. It wasn't necessarily, so, you know, I don't think we were specifically just asking, hey, you know, tell us what you need, or something like that. It was more or less, we have an idea, this is an idea, conceptually, what do you think? And then, do you have ideas that collaborate with that? I think that's kind of the flow that I was expecting. Correct me if I'm wrong, Warren?
No, I think that's fine.
Yeah, that sounds great. And then, in tandem, we're actually, you might have heard during the opening, is that we're also forming an Economic and Development Committee in the town of Plymouth, which Joseph, Joseph is the head of, and it sounds like everyone's been appointed to that. So, in addition to tonight's conversation, it also might be beneficial to talk with them as well. But yeah, please, Warren.
That was, that was one of the reasons that Alex is interested in getting some input from you guys. He obviously wants to do something that would benefit the community. I mean, the basic concept would be some retail on the, on the Main Street level, some apartments up above, maybe some parking in behind. That's pretty basic, what we're looking for, but if there's any other input that you guys may have to help with your development, Alex is really interested in getting a little bit of feedback from you guys before we pursue even getting that stuff really designed and laid out, and that kind of stuff, especially with what you have for upcoming developments. Mostly, it's an introductory thing to say, we want to work with you guys, with your team that you got coming in, to see if there's any way that it can benefit both of us.
Just to clarify, I was writing notes as you were talking. So apartments up above, retail first floor?
Yep.
And something else down below?
Oh, down, down on the, on the lower side, like a walkout for additional for the, the business aspect of it, and then there would be parking out behind to try and keep that.
So residential just on second floor?
Just on the second floor, just a few apartments or whatever would fit up there.
Mm-hmm. Kind of classic Main Street setup.
Classic Main Street setup, that's why, I mean, that's the basic formula for that area, but if there's something else that you guys may, especially when the development people come through, is that giving some ideas of some other way that, that could help to revitalize that area a little bit and bring some more stuff down there.
I guess that's my thought, like, I wonder what that backside might look like, that, I mean, a lot of the backends of the building, right, buildings right now, you know, are kind of the backside of buildings, that we're supposed to look at.
Yeah, exactly.
And if we do bring more eyes down there, in a positive light, you know, what could that look like?
Yep, that's why, that's why we're gonna get in early when you guys are starting to put the stuff together and say, how can we be a part of that and not a problem?
How much parking do you have there now, behind those two lots?
So, there wasn't any parking there before, the way the buildings were stretched out, but I believe with the way the layout is, I bet you can put, not a lot, but 10 or 12 spots back there. We'd have to do a formal plan and put all that stuff together, and, you know, put all little cars in there and see how they fit, so to speak. But that's, that's the general idea of what we're looking at.
Thinking of combining the lots?
I would think maybe combining the lots, or, or we keep them separate like they were, but I think especially in the back, combining that parking area to make that work, save a little bit of the parking up front, and give the, either whoever's in the businesses a little place to park, or whoever's up above, a place to park, you could have some deliveries back there, that kind of stuff. Again, it's very basic now, as to the thoughts of where it goes there, so there's a long, long way to go, but the idea was to involve the Planning Board, we spoke with Scott Whedon, he suggested that we come and, and sit with, or, and speak with you guys tonight, just to...
I recall someone noting that the boundary, property boundaries on Railroad Square are not the most convenient for the property owners and businesses down there, and now I understand why.
It really is not.
It's real, no, I think the...
In a perfect world, there could be a couple of realignments down there that would make the world a little better place.
Are any of your property lines disputed? I know there's some question about some of your property lines as well, I think.
Yeah.
Or are they all pretty solid?
I can't answer that question, for sure, I can't.
So how many units are you thinking potentially? And I'm not sure you've gotten that far, and like, would you can...
I would think, it's about 80 feet, it's about 80 feet wide, so, I don't know, four units upstairs, and maybe three retail spaces, or...
Okay.
One that can be connected together and partitioned out, however, whoever the need is for whatever business might want to go in there.
Have you considered, so, there's always a demand for parking whenever there's an event at the Monkey, and I'm wondering if the, if, if, you know, like a concrete parking structure on the, on the, like, on the Railroad Square level would be feasible?
We've talked about that, and when you, when you start to look at the size of the lot?
Yeah.
And how many you could get there with different levels.
Limited.
There is a way to do it with three separate levels and access on each side, but it really still limits the amount of cars, and then...
Yeah.
The cost of putting that in versus the benefit.
Right.
Without doing a real engineered study.
Right.
Yes, we have thought about that, and if you guys have a way to make that work, we're open to the idea.
I, I think, obviously, you know, the, the need for parking is, is there.
For sure.
And, and, you know, there's really no time, like, when you have a blank slate to really, it's the most cost-effective time to accommodate it.
Exactly right.
So...
And, we're not looking for answers today, but any stretch of the imagination, I just want to plant the seeds for you guys, so if anybody has a...
The thing with the parking structure is, a lot of that is taken up by like, drive space?
Yeah.
And when you have a small lot to deal with, you're sucking up a lot of that just by getting the cars around.
There is, it's...
Exactly.
I've, I've looked at it a little bit, and, and there is, it's conceivable that you could have a parking area with three different levels, with outramps and stuff like that, one from the main, one about halfway through, and then one on the bottom. I mean, theoretically, you could do that. I think there's space there, I just don't, I still don't see cost-wise versus...
Yeah.
I don't know how that...
I was just thinking about like, you know, Railroad, Railroad Square level, just one floor, and then do retail at Main Street level, and then do like residential above, but, you know, it's, it's kind of up to you, I mean, you guys have, have a, it's your slate.
I agree with that, but we really appreciate the input that you guys may have, because Alex really does want to...
I was also just wondering, depending on what, you know, first floor retail looks like?
Yep.
And whether that be, would be a, you know, things to purchase, or food, or what have you, if that could even lead to a, some kind of like, opening, frontage, patio for eating or something on the backside, because, you know, you've already got grotto back there, like within eye, eye shot.
Yeah.
And it could start to create some interesting visual connections and space to be.
You are correct, that might be, that might be a cool concept to go through there.
Depending on if it works, you know.
Yeah, for sure. For sure.
Have you considered a third floor, or is that really like a, a no-go?
A third floor, or?
You mean to make it off of, from Main Street to go three stories up?
That would be too...
I mean, it's, it's a tight three stories, but, I mean...
I would say we have not considered that, my thought was, was the retail on the first floor with some above, but then you're also dropping down a level in the back, where you would have access for, like I said, either additional retail space down there that you could access from either side, or just where you can go in for maybe deliveries, or whatever you might have for your...
Isn't our limit 35 feet?
35 feet, which we've seen three stories squeezed into, it was a tough squeeze.
But didn't, didn't we redefine how you measure 35 feet on Main Street, to say that it's measured from the street elevation?
It is, so you could squeeze three stories in.
So you could be 35 feet from street elevation.
I guess my, my first concern would be, go, if you're going up, would, would you be thinking more living space above there?
Potentially.
Because then you could end up more parking issues, I would think, because it's already tight with parking. Not that I'm not saying I don't want to go that way.
Yeah, I was just thinking from the, from the point of view of making the investment in the space as worth it as possible?
Yep.
And as cost-effective as possible. If that would work to have a third story, that could like offset some of the costs long run of the construction.
For sure, for sure, like I said, my, my biggest concern would be the parking, and we have some parking out back, I just don't know that would be enough to support...
That much.
The retail space, as well as two stories full of apartments.
And I think that concern you have with parking is historically often a concern that the Board has seen when new housing would be introduced downtown is parking.
Yep.
Yep, I think that's echoed. But I think with the sharet coming up in April, I don't know what your timeline looks like, but it could be very interesting, because, you know, I can't speak for the future, but Railroad Square might have a whole new look.
Yeah. I don't foresee...
It's a decade, you know, it'd be over.
I don't foresee us doing anything until next spring anyway, so, so I think we have some time to, to play with that, especially with, like you said, the sharet, or whether that is.
Yeah, we would love for you, for you folks to be part of that conversation.
That would be, that would be good for us, too.
Because it could have, you know, that's an entire space down there, you know, up to, you know, the other side of the senior center, all the way down to the skate park, really.
Yep.
Over to the river and up to Main Street.
Yep.
Could really have a different vision over the next couple decades.
Right.
And it's worth noting that even without us doing anything, it's already starting to happen, like, what was a garage is now grotto, and, like, we're already kind of sliding down that hill in some ways.
It's gonna happen.
One of my thoughts is, you know, oftentimes, anytime there's a disturbance or a fire, it can trigger, you know, if, if there are any non-conforming uses that you have an interest in continuing, there are timeframes that you have to observe in terms of reinstating those uses, but, you know, that's, you know, I don't know, honestly, it, I don't even know that the uses that were there were non-conforming. It seems like everything that was there would be allowed if you wanted to do the same thing under the current zoning, so, you know, that might not be an issue, but in general, like, anytime there's a catastrophic loss that's untimely, you know, it's, it's good to be aware of those timelines.
I will, I will look, take that into advisement, look into that in case where there's some window that we might miss.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're, you know, because, I mean, non-conforming uses are one thing, but, you know, area, area, there can be non-conforming areas as well, where you might be looking at a different footprint if you rebuild outside of a timeframe.
Yep.
Just be aware of those things.
I know, I will, thank you.
It's also worth considering, I'm sorry.
You're good.
So we're doing a brownfields assessment of the property across the street.
Right, we are.
And that will likely lead to a separate kind of sharet light-like process.
Yep.
And, so you might have another neighbor across the street as well.
Sure.
Which, I'm not sure really affects what you're doing, but it's just kind of interesting to think about, kind of really, kind of livened up space over there.
Do you mind saying for the record what the brownfield assessment is, just for the people listening?
So through the Lake Region Planning Commission, Plymouth was, more of it's kind of them helping to organize that, got a brownfield assessment of the soil and land there in terms of the uses that were there, potentially contaminating, and part of that process, which is, kind, seems to be like a new thing for this sort of process, involves an attempt to re-envision what that could be, and kind of get that ball rolling, because what's happened in the past with a lot of brownfield sites, is they, they get assessed, they get cleaned up, and then it just kind of, the ball gets dropped and it just still stays a vacant lot.
Over the wayside, in short.
And this is supposed to kind of jumpstart the process of not just leaving a vacant lot efforts cleaned up, but actually like, using it for something.
And it's, it's a, it is a brownfield there because there was a hotel that burned down.
And there was apparently construction storage and all kinds of other stuff after that.
Right, thank you. That might be, that might be a great place for a parking garage, too.
Honestly, I think there's the, we have talked about the terrace, you know, they're, extending parking above kind of that interim street in between those two. That might be a good, good way to do that, is have a parking structure that connects those two.
It often seems like...
Crawling away from the...
It often, we are, we are getting a little off-topic, and this, my, my one comment on that is, it often seems like it's more trouble than it's worth for the few spots you get.
Yeah, right.
Despite the catastrophic loss of the fire, in some ways, the timing of getting the sharet, and you having this conversation, and the formation of the, the Economic Development Committee is good timing?
Yeah.
Depending on your speed of development.
I don't, I don't think we have any immediate plans to start doing this stuff, I think Al really does want to work.
So I think, yeah...
With all the stuff that's coming up.
Yeah, I think it's, this conversation feels a bit early to me, because I think that there's still so much to discover in the next six months, or...
I don't disagree with that. We, when we met with Scott, like I said, he started telling us about the stuff that's coming up.
Yeah, no, I think it's great you're here.
And he said, come meet you guys.
It's awesome.
Well, and not only here, but like, have your voice heard in the sharet process as well.
Absolutely.
Sure, love that.
I, I do love, you know, what's happened on South Main Street in Concord, you know, there's been a lot of redevelopment in the past 20 years. Not, it was not unlike Plymouth now, 20 years ago, and, and, you know, when you look at the investments they've put into buildings there, and, and the, the economic engine that has created for restaurants, nightlife, you know, office space, it's really an asset to, to Concord. And, and, you know, I don't think that revitalization or reinvestment of a property that's had this kind of losses is inappropriate, you know, I think it's, this is a great time to look at that and say, you know, what...
Perfect.
Yeah, you know. And, and I love everything, you know, the, the character of projects that Common Man tends to do is, it's unique, it, it really draws people to our area, and I think, you know, the, the goals of the Economic Development Committee, you know, I, I have a hard time envisioning anything that Common Man would do there as being a detriment, you know, like, I, I think, you know, any investment...
Thank you.
Is really gonna be certainly better than what's there now, or what, what was there, but I have a lot of optimism for what, what it could potentially be.
I think it has a lot of potential, it's just a matter of finding the right spot.
Right.
Certainly.
Brandon, I know you're on a slight delay tonight, do you have any comments, questions or concerns?
Uh, no, this is great, yeah, I think, you know, I think, again, when we met, it was all about getting the ball started, introduction, and then, you know, collaborative between the sharet and whatever, whatever else we can do to kind of, you know, about, and really kind of put a, put a home run in that area, I think, it's, you know, that whole area is starting to really take shape, like, I think it was, I feel it was Phil that said that, but I'm driving, but it sounded like Phil's voice. Is that Phil talking? Hey, Phil! Yeah, no, but I mean, you know, this, this, just a lot of positive things going on down there, and one thing you're absolutely right about is the qualitative measure of Common Man, you know, and, and Warren's, you know, great example of that as well, because he's seen it and been through it all, so, I'm excited to see what we do. So, the next steps for us, I think, are just, actually, what are the next steps for us? What do we want to do?
I, I think the next step is to, we'll come up with some of our ideas, and we'll match them with whatever sharet comes up with, and so forth, and so forth, and it'll take a little time, but we'll...
Plan to, plan to participate in the sharet when it comes out.
Plan to participate, I think that's really the next step.
I just have a random idea I showed to Molly. Since it's become an ownership, and we're dealing with a not very tall building next door? I don't, I don't know what the structural issues are or anything else, but have you considered a roof garden on top of the Monkey?
Yeah. If it's on top of the Monkey, there would be no roof gardens.
Do you want to speak upon that more tonight? Thank you.
No roof gardens.
Okay.
Are there any other questions, comments?
The only thing I'll say is, you know, next steps, I mean, the ball is in your court, but it's been lobbed.
Yes.
Like, it's, we want you to succeed.
Thank you. Alright, we'll, we'll do some, some heavy thinking on as well, and bring it to you guys, and talk to the upcoming boards and stuff.
Awesome, thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much for coming in tonight. Thank you, Warren, thank you, Brandon.
Yes, thank you so much.
Take care, Brandon.
Yeah.
Before we move on to the next item on the agenda, I'll open the floor up for public Before we move on to the next item on the agenda, I'll open the floor up for public comments. If anyone is here to comment on the conceptual consultation that we just went through. No comments, all right, perfect. We shall close the floor and move on to the next conceptual consultation we have tonight of 312 Fairgrounds Road is Tanya LaChance with us tonight. Tanya LaChance does not appear to be with us tonight. Is, I'll open this up to public comment, is anyone here to speak upon 312 Fairgrounds Road? All right.
Anyone online?
Anyone online?
Looks like it's just two town halls.
Oh.
On Zoom.
Other town halls checking us out, see what we do. All right, well, if Tanya is not with us tonight and no one is here to speak upon 312 Fairgrounds Road, we will move on to item number seven on our agenda tonight. Ending tonight's conceptual consultations, moving on to other business from members of the board and the planning staff. So, other business, Joseph, if you wouldn't mind?
Sure, sure. So, at the last meeting, the board had a couple of requests for more information on in particular items related to large commercial uses, which stemmed from a discussion of the commercial uses listed in the Tenny Mountain Overlay District Potential Zoning Amendment. And then there also were a couple of questions about the, the, basically the ground floor facade requirements in the Village Commercial Zone. So, there is some information in your packet with regards to both of those items. And Avery did, did a lot of this research as well. And so, we were able to give you, I hope, some, some good examples at least of what it looks like to have commercial facilities of various sizes ranging from 1,000 to over 700,000 square feet. Obviously, a picture, two dimensional or a 3D picture is, is hard to, still a little hard to envision scale. But hopefully, perhaps some of you might be familiar with some of these buildings. At least, you know, it's a, some frame of reference when we talk about 100,000, 200,000 square feet. And then there are a couple of points in the attached memo with regards to some of the definitions and terms cited in the Overlay District. So, the Overlay District proposes three uses that the board asked for. In particular, manufacturing, 200,000 square feet, research and development or testing laboratory and warehouse. Just a quick comment, word of, word of caution, I suppose, or something to consider. Manufacturing is not currently defined in our zoning ordinance or in the Tenny Mountain Overlay District Zoning Amendment. It is a part of our definition of industry, but our definition of industry also uses other language as well. So, there, that is something to think about, whether we want to keep manufacturing in the TMod language as it currently stands and defining it as something other than industry, or perhaps using the same term of industry in the TMod. Sometimes you see light industry, heavy industry, manufacturing carved out in a separate definitions. But that is a fairly complex question. It could be as simple as, do we want to just use the term industry, which we already use? The second piece to that, there's a term called research and development or testing laboratory, which the board asked about. That one is, so research and development has a definition in the Tenny Mountain Overlay District Draft Zoning Amendment, which is similar to, but not exactly the same as our zoning ordinance's current definition of research laboratory. So, that's another one to think about because testing laboratory is not defined in the Tenny Mountain Overlay District. So, perhaps it would be better if we're saying research and development, which is defined in the overlay, and testing laboratory, which is not defined, perhaps that should have been a reference to research laboratory, which is defined. And then the last one is warehouse, which is in our current table of uses, but lacks a definition. So, right now, I think, you know, more or less, we would probably just go by something of a standard definition for warehouse. But if we did want to define that in a particular way, we could consider that. You know, we do have related definitions. We have a commercial storage facility. Often, those definitions are somewhat similar to warehouse, though distinct wholesale business definition also includes warehouse. Obviously, usually would be warehousing in service of that wholesale business. And then we also have a distinct use called truck terminal. So, that's hopefully not throwing too many terms out there. That's just kind of summarizing the questions raised in this memo in response to the three uses that the board highlighted in the discussion last meeting. And they are perhaps worth thinking about in, in each case. You know, none of that, I would say, is, is huge on its own, but they are worth thinking about, whether they could be better harmonized with what we have today. And then there are also a couple of just exemplary definitions from other towns of related uses as kind of some inspiration, food for thought. And then I'll quickly summarize the other one, too, unless you'd rather I wait. And if you wanted to talk about the, the Tenny Mountain stuff first, the other item cites the ground floor facades and village commercial.
Yeah, I think we'll tackle the Tenny Mountain stuff right now and then we can touch base on the ground floor stuff after that.
I had a thought.
Sure.
For the manufacturing versus industrial uses, industrial can be quite broad. And it might include things that we might not want to see there. And it might be a good idea to narrow that down with a separate manufacturing use. And I'm not sure how that kind of, is that a sub-use of industrial then? I mean, in terms of like how it would look in a, in a definitions, it would still be part of industrial, I suppose. Like the same way we have housing as a definite, like residential as a definition and different types of residential, would that be the same sort of thing where we'd have industrial as a definition? And then a particular type of industrial, which would be manufacturing industrial or something?
Yeah, you certainly could. It would actually, civic, this way we define civic uses would be a, a good way to, to get at what you're saying, which is we say civic uses as a term and then we subdefine civic uses limited to public safety, civic uses limited to public safety and office. So, perhaps you could envision a definition of industry which says industry and then has a separate definition, industry limited to light manufacturing.
So, if I, if I can point out, you know, our current definition of industry says assemble, manufacture, processing, packaging, or other operations to goods or materials. You know, the, the processing or packaging gets into the warehousing pretty quickly. But, you know, I think they're both, you know, I think it's part of the goal of, of our draft language already. I mean, I, I don't.
I guess my concern, we've talked in the past.
Yeah.
About the processing part in particular, potentially involving like earth processing as well. And we, we've had conversations, like probably about a year ago, we've had conversations about that. And I'm not sure that's what we want to see there. And that's like, that was like really my only thought that was coming to mind, like some of that processing use could be quite broad.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure we want to fully encompass that within the overlay. I'm not sure anybody wants to do that within the overlay, but they could. If they had enough land to say, well, I'm doing an overlay, it's going to involve like, you know, earth processing and a big pit.
I was going to say, can we, can we somehow limit it to be, you know, processing that can be done inside of a structure and contained? Seriously.
Tent over the pit.
You know, it seems like our, if, if our concern is compatibility with surrounding areas, do we want to leave it that broad? So, my thinking is like, rather than make this more complicated and include new definitions, can we use our existing definitions and replace the definitions in our, in our draft to include some of the definitions we already have? Maybe we want to look at just kind of tweaking the definitions of what we have already in our zoning.
I think that's important is that, because historically, we've seen how convoluted things get when.
We introduce new definitions, yeah.
So, I think whether it's.
Insistency is good.
Even if we're updating our definitions and that, I think that'd be prudent. But I do think the, the mirroring of it is for the future better aligning.
Well, this could include something to the effect of, in the actual TMod language, saying something about compatible uses with the area that might preclude certain types of industrial use.
Sort of pare it down a little bit.
To prevent things that, you know, like a, like a big excavation pit, we might say, this is, this is not what we want to see there. And it, it should fit within this vision of the overlay.
Well, so, talking about in manufacturing in a structure, that's, when you look at the definitions provided in the packet about heavy industry and light industry, excuse me, that's where we start to get those types of differentiations. So, I think, you know, if we don't want to add manufacturing as a definition in order to get our definitions getting messy, but we do want to be able to differentiate between different types of industry, maybe that's one of the ways we could do that, is through breaking out the industry definition into light and heavy. Because there is a piece here from Dover, the, the second definition of light industry. If everyone's, it's, I'm on like.
That was the emailed packet.
Yeah.
Clarify.
Yeah.
I see some people flipping for it.
So, I'll just read it. So, me, so light industry means all manufacturing and assembly processes carried out, carried on completely within a structure and involving no permanent outside storage of equipment or materials. And then there's except as customary to accessory use in connection with the permitted activities with the structures, unless such storage is approved by the Dover Planning Board. So, the point, the piece that I, I wanted to bring out the word structure there since Phil brought up the idea of it happening in a structure. And then heavy industry is the processing or production of materials predominantly from an extracted or raw material and may involve the use of flammable, explosive, or other hazardous materials. So, that might be one way we could tackle it.
Yep.
Instead of adding something new, kind of, becoming more specific.
And to Phil's comment, you, so you see in the Tenny Mountain Overlay, manufacturing as a term that is limited a bit by the parenthetical, no more than 200,000 square feet. So, you could envision a scenario, too, where that parenthetical says industry, if we were to change the term.
Sure.
Which is conduct, provided such use is conducted completely within a building of less than 100,000 square feet. So, you could use that use and then in the language of the TMod, limit it a bit.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
I think that sounds, I think that sounds good.
Trying to think.
So, and then we don't have a definition for warehouse, even though we have warehouse as a potential use that we're considering. It's inside of wholesale business.
I, I would like to say that the, the DHL facility in Bo that is in our package is gigantic.
How many, how many square feet is it?
It's, it's 266,000 square feet. And I, I recall, I, I knew someone who owned, used to own property that abuts that. And I, I don't know if he still owns it or not, but like when I saw his house and this in his backyard, I was appalled at the fact that, you know, it, it's, I don't think there would be enough land in that zone. I don't think there would be enough flat land in that zone to build something like this without filling in every wetland that's there.
That kind of connects really well into Section H of the TMOD, number two, which is the specific objectives. Every PUD in the Tenny Mountain Overlay District shall incorporate, incorporate several of the following elements. And that's included in mix of uses, architectural design, placement of structures on most suitable sites with consideration of topography, soils, vegetation, slope, et cetera, mitigation of view shed. I think if we tweak the language in that first sentence, every PUD in the Tenny Mountain Overlay District shall incorporate several of, instead of saying shall incorporate the following elements and not make any of the elements listed here.
Required.
Optional, but rather something to be included. Because that's, it's vague language that kind of opens us up for someone coming to us with one of these and saying, well, I included several of them, whatever several is. You know? And I do feel this section of the TMOD is extremely important in mitigating any of our concerns and probably a lot of the people of this town's concerns about warehouse questions, how warehouses look, what view shed impacts we might have if we allow that type of development, topography, et cetera.
There is a benefit to the, to a HUD being a little bit flexible. And I'm looking at things like use of traffic mitigation or traffic calming measures. It may or may not be.
Necessary.
Necessary in all cases. And, and I wonder to what extent we should just trust the planning board. We may trust ourselves, but it might be other members in the planning board as well to make the right call in these, interpreting several. And to what extent we should mandate these and thereby make the HUD a little bit more rigid. I don't have an answer to that, let's bring it out there.
Comment.
I guess I feel like there are some that feel pretty non-negotiable to me, that feel very important and maybe use of traffic mitigation is less important. But when I think about these warehouse examples that were provided to us, there's a big difference. I mean, size definitely is a factor, but also what the building looks like is a factor. And so, this provisions for quality architectural design is a piece that could, could mitigate, you know, getting a proposal that includes a warehouse that's just an eyesore.
And even having that as an option among the several gives the planning board the power to say, no, this is not do what we asked for.
Okay. You think that, you think that the language being vague is actually okay, that the planning board can still.
It lets, it lets the developer know what we're looking for within the context of a planned unit development, which is a fairly flexible framework, but you, you, you still know what we're looking for. And that's in the list, you know, if you're building something that's an eyesore, we, we're going to call you out on it. At least we, you, we should be.
At, at some point, unless you're in an airplane, and maybe the pilots from the, from the.
The airport.
The pilots from the airport might be the ones that are going to object to this. But like, you know, a warehouse is a warehouse. Like, you know, if you're looking at a 700,000 square foot warehouse, it's, it's a 20-foot wall, whether it's 100,000 square feet or 700,000 square feet.
All warehouses must include a rooftop garden.
I've seen some, you go up through Bo, down that way, off the highway, and you see the big ones they had down there, like by the truck stop, they, they put a huge one down there.
That's, I think that's the one I'm talking about.
Yeah, and that one, I think, actually, it really isn't that bad a looking. I mean, it's, it's huge, it's big, but it's well-designed, it looks good. It's not just some cement building like they threw up there. There was, a lot of thought was put into it, I think, as far as how it was supposed to look. Because it takes, you can really see, you notice it, I mean, my wife is, she's like, oh, man, where did this thing come from?
It's actually interesting.
It's a, it's a, it's a good looking, they had, you know, trees out there and stuff, and it just, it was well done.
So, that's the landscaping part of it, too.
Yeah, that is the landscaping part of it, yeah.
I mean, the building part itself, I mean, for a warehouse.
There was effort.
Huh?
There was effort.
Yeah, so what, exactly.
It's interesting to consider, though, with all the elevation there. You could potentially put a 200,000 square foot warehouse on a 100,000 square foot plot of land with a front and rear entrance on two separate levels.
Yeah. Because you would stack the.
Yeah.
You'd layer and stack.
And I don't, you can't necessarily write that into this, but, you know, there are opportunities like that.
What do you think, Neil?
Well, I'm thinking about the soils. I, I know that much of, much of the soils out there are, are high percentage clay and silt, and they're very deep. And I, I, you know, you're, you're going to be building floating pads.
Up here, a lot of pile driving.
I just couldn't see, I couldn't see one of those gargantuan warehouses out there. It wouldn't seem practical to me.
I, I agree, and, you know, I, I feel the, I think it's a, we're, we're concerned about a self-limiting, potentially. Like, I just don't, I think we should accommodate some level, but I think the, the site characteristics of the area are somewhat limiting already. It would be very expensive. Like, you know, when you're on the seacoast and it's already fairly flat and sandy and well-drained, it's easy to grade it out and put a 200,000 square foot warehouse in. But like, when you're dealing with sites that are rocky and wet and poor soils, it's, the engine, the, the civil engineering of putting a building in there is, is a challenge.
Can you explain to me why it would be, why the clay makes a difference? For why, what do you mean by floating pad?
It's, it's, it moves.
Okay.
Yeah. It doesn't drain.
It doesn't.
It doesn't drain and it, and it expands and contracts.
Yeah, putting a foundation, I think, well, I don't know, I, I agree with Neil because I know on the land there, I've seen it. And it's just, it's not, it's a pretty, not even terrain, I should say, you know? It's like you get a lot of different soils and stuff, it's going to be expensive to put something like that in there, which I won't see, but, you know, it's small. So, I don't think it'd be a place that we'd have to worry about, I guess, someone lying there building something.
I can see like smaller industry, like, there's like an industrial park off of Etna Road in, in, in between Lebanon and Hanover.
Yes, something like that.
You know, small manufacturing, I can see a lot of that, like it'd be, being a good site for that type of facilities.
Yeah, there is a kind of industrial.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's small facilities, it's, it's, it's not, not huge, it's medium, medium-sized facilities. And it might lend itself to that type of development. And, and again, the other thing I was thinking about, like anything with warehousing, like, do we really want 200 tractor-trailer trips a day up Tenny Mountain Highway to 93?
No.
Probably not. Like, we, we can probably deal with ski traffic, right? But, but, you know, tractor-trailers on top of that is. Probably not, like we can probably deal with ski traffic, right, but but, you know, tractor trailers on top of that is I suspect is probably not going to be appealing for a lot of people. And I mean, it's, you know, proximity to interstate corridors is generally one of the things that that they consider when citing large distribution facilities. And, you know, I'm not sure we want to invite that to a site that that's far west of our main town.
I don't too, there's enough tractor trailer trucking up through that already, I mean, there really is quite a bit of it, if you really think about it. Double it, I think, would be, you see it everywhere, but just be where the fuel pumps are and stuff, you know, people going out of Bristol, you know, trucks, there really is quite a bit of heavy traffic as far as trucks go in that road.
I I'm kind of curious if we should limit the size of development to a hundred fifty thousand, which is slightly smaller than the current.
I think we should think about limiting the size because I do get nervous when we discuss terrain.
Yeah.
It's sort of like saying likelihood of someone building here because of the expense, because of the current condition is minimal. That's what they said fifty years ago when people said they can't build on that hillside, that's too expensive, now there's houses all through the hillside.
Or where there's a Walmart.
Right, right.
They they put in a retaining wall and a lot of fill and, yeah.
Yeah, e- exactly, where it's like, you know, the it was the resources were there for someone to do it, so and the zoning allowed for it, so it got done when no one saw it. Yeah.
So Phil, are you talking about that manufacturing question?
Yeah, I was thinking where it's we've got two hundred thousand square feet in parentheses, I'm I'm thinking that, you know, manufacturing or so I was thinking like just changing that to match our existing industrial and limit it to a hundred fifty thousand square feet. That way we don't have to redefine manufacturing and zoning and it makes it easier to slide in, but you read my mind, yeah.
I do think too that the bigger the building, if someone does decide to spend that kind of money on the site work, they're going to have to divert all that moisture somewhere. We have to start thinking about what's not in that overlay that's going to get affected by all of this, because it's going to get pushed somewhere. So I think reducing the size of the building will kind of decrease that.
Most, I mean, that's the, you know, the drainage plans, like our 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 plans are basically require there's already a requirement that they they treat runoff on site and they have infiltration basin so that you don't in increase the runoff from that site. So anytime they put in anything that's that much imperative surface, they have to create enough potential for infiltration. Like like when they did Market Basket, like that whole parking lot has infiltration structures under it to allow all that water to infiltrate under the parking lot as opposed to having like a detention basin behind there where they're where it's like the
Running directly off into pond.
Yeah, like if you look at what they they couldn't do that on Main Street, so there's that huge infiltration pond on the south end of Main Street by the skate park now. But, you know, when you look at like the Market Basket, they didn't have one of those because it's all under the parking lot.
The the basic point being it's already part of our site plan review process.
Yes.
That we mandate this and anybody coming in for this process is going to be faced with the same necessities
Yeah.
to meet.
Can you explain that a little bit to me because my brain is not connecting those things? I'm thinking about the P U D is we get a P U D application and we look at the plan and then additionally, when we we get a site plan.
We can't just ignore environmental concerns.
No, no, I know, but if we were, let's say this is a thing that we have.
Yeah.
We get a P U D from an applicant, let's say we approve the overall overall P U D. It then additionally, they have to come to us with a site for a site plan review for that.
So keep in mind the P U D might be like one big developer.
Yeah.
And then they might say, all right, this parcel, like this guy is going to lease that parcel and he's going to come to you with a site plan for his manufacturing facility and that facility
And at that point, that's what a site plan review is.
That's a conventional site plan review for that or, you know, the other the other, like, there might be housing developments in the P U D and this guy's going to bring you a subdivision plan for the housing development. This is going to be the, you know, the main developer might do the the downtown area with with high density stuff, but he might, there might be other
This is the master plan that
Yeah, so this is the high level, okay, and and so then concerns that runoff then come after that and we will have site plan review.
The the P U D is kind of like planning a new town and and the development within that town is going to be handled as it normally would be for a subdivision or a site plan.
Okay, thank you.
Kind of curious what Steve Kelly, Stephen Kelly thinks about potential research and manufacturing there at this point.
Yeah, since the
The life sciences have collapsed.
Bubble burst.
Honestly, it's there's probably so much, I I suspect there's opportunity. We don't know what the opportunities are going to be over the next
No, we don't.
twenty or thirty years and, you know, I think that we should be providing reasonable opportunity to create those kind of jobs, you know, if it brings jobs to the area, definitely, it's it's a great thing.
I I I was just saying that more out of curiosity since we heard so much about that. And obviously those plans might might end up changing, but obviously whatever we design in this piece of paper here needs to accommodate all sorts of different plans.
So how does everyone feel on the size of a hundred fifty thousand square feet?
What would the dimensions be for a hundred and fifty thousand?
Walmart.
Walmart?
Walmart is a hundred fifty five thousand square feet.
A lot of the drainage from Walmart is running down onto Tenny Mountain Highway and creating problems.
Is it?
Is it?
Is it just access road or is it?
Well, it's all glacial till up there and it's on ledge. So the water can't go, it can't get much ground treatment, it's riding right on on ledge. And then it goes down on the Tenny Mountain Highway and that was built in nineteen fifty three and and drainage has never been upgraded. So, you know, the state doesn't want to address it. It's kind of a problem for a lot of people along that highway.
I I do recall the the two developments across the street from the coffee shop. They've had impounding issues and drainage issues, haven't they?
Yes, that's something I wonder about is, I know we have we'll have like a SWIFT or drainage reports and all these studies. But I was, you know, I do think like, all right, what about three parcels over, five parcels over, you know, that's a headwater.
I mean, in theory, the if you if you're allowing infiltration on site, you know, the most of the studies show like they can, they can, you know, the goal of those studies is to say that, you know, a hundred year storm, we're not going to see an increase in runoff from the parcel. Like they basically have designed their infiltration systems to handle a hundred year storm and basically they they have enough capacity to allow it to infiltrate on that site. It may be different than it would have been in an undisturbed place, like it may be going in here instead of over there or, you know, the infiltration may have been diffuse over the entire parcel where now it's concentrated.
But wouldn't Boulder Point have had this done and now there's problems like you said, across the street?
If I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, my my way of looking at this is there's potential for large scale development all over town in many ways. Um, and if there's a problem with recent developments and stormwater, we might want to look at that more broadly in our regulations and not just in the Tenny Mountain overlay.
Right.
There might be a broader issue in how our regulations are written that should be addressed all over town. And we shouldn't just worry about how they apply in the overlay. We should make sure they apply everywhere correctly and in a way that's not going to cause any adverse impact on other parcels than than the developed one.
I agree, but I don't think that we should pass for pass the overlay to to I agree that if there's issues elsewhere the whole town, but I don't think that's a reason to say, don't worry about, don't worry about it on this. We'll make sure we take care of it as a whole of the town, you know?
I I I'm gonna say, I don't think the overlay is necessarily where you want to write different drainage regulations and stormwater regulations. That's something we should potentially look at in 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 our regulations and if that really is a problem. And that recent developments have not drained properly.
We got into this, okay.
Yeah, and I I think for the overlay, we just have to trust that our regulations for stormwater in general work and if they don't, fix them, but that's like, I don't think that's an overlay problem.
Is there, sorry, Phil, go ahead.
I I was just gonna say, I agree, we I think we're getting sidetracked, I mean, you know, our our concern about this is concern about things that happen everywhere in town and and I think, you know, I think our goal should be to do everything we can to integrate all of our current terms in our zoning into our proposed language so that there's less incompatibility, but I I and I think we're on good track to do that.
I think we're on a good track, I just hear you guys saying that, hey, it happens everywhere, so don't worry about it here.
No.
Nothing really needs to be worried about because the more development you get, this stuff's got to go somewhere.
I know what you're saying, I just, it's like, don't worry about it, it happens everywhere.
I'm not, that's that's the exact opposite of what I'm trying to say. It's not, don't worry about it because it happens everywhere.
No, you're saying, don't worry about it here.
It's saying, this is not the right place, this is not the right place to fix it. And the very fact that we're bringing up all these sites that are not there means that it's happening more broadly and we need to fix it more broadly. So it doesn't happen at at the Tenny Mountain overlay and it doesn't happen along Tenny Mountain Highway or anywhere else where you might do a large development. If something's broken, fix it broadly in our regulations and don't just try to fix it in the
But not in this.
Yeah.
Can you request impact studies when someone brings in a site plan review or whatever, can you request them to do that?
Any 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 site plan can refer to that.
I think those are really important, yeah.
Yeah, that'd probably be something that would be beneficial.
And we can, we can
Could we put a restriction on large scale development on poorly drained soils?
You speak more upon that a little bit?
Poorly drained soils, hydroic B soils, soils that don't drain well and you're not going to be able to get ground treatment on poorly drained soils.
I think what they do is they just make you dig out more, put in more material that's going to allow it and do more. I think really they will approve anything these days if you compensate for it somewhere else and you've got the checkbook to do it.
But yeah, I mean, you have to compensate them.
But I, you're right, I think we're getting off track here a little bit, but
Well, so it sounds like a looking at our site plan regulate, because that's where that type of drainage management regulation lives, is in site plan review, right? We we can, we as a board can amend that.
And and it might be interesting, like maybe as part of our spring agenda, who knows? Like when we get through zoning amendments to look at like model regulations from other towns or something and see if we could do something different. Um, and the great thing about site plan review regulations is we can adopt them anytime we want.
Yeah, and if something is not working, they don't have to go to town, yeah.
We had also talked about, I I think I we at the beginning of the year, we had proposed considering a townwide wetlands ordinance which could also affect how, you know, rather than relying on state identification and and protection for wetlands, you know, we could have a town level enforcement available for that.
And and part of that was waiting for the, what's your call it, to come in first, the
Natural resource.
N R I.
N R I.
I was just thinking about the N R I.
Yeah, we we did agree to wait on that, but like that, you know, if if we get the N R I updated and we decide to move forward with that, that would apply everywhere, not just here, and that would be another level of protection where we're not relying on state wetland protections, whether they're enforced or not, but we could have local protection.
Can we go back to this question of square footage?
Yes, please.
Um, I'm fine with anywhere between a hundred and hundred and fifty square feet.
I I think we would be limiting ourselves if we were too small.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I'd like a hundred square, a hundred and fifty square feet, but I understand that it's not necessarily realistic.
I just don't know if that's, I would too personally.
Yeah.
I think that's a better fit, but I I don't know, because I don't want to shoehorn into something that is is limiting.
Yeah, I don't want to make it unrealistic.
And this is for manufacturing or industrial?
This is for, yeah, what we're probably going, it sounds like we are in the mood to change this word manufacturing to industry.
I I think we should change the inde- our current level of our change, current definition of industry and limit it to a hundred fifty thousand square feet.
You want to change it to our current division definition of industry.
Yeah, follow those.
Not change and not change our definition of industry as of right now.
What about commercial?
Worth noting
Different
Different.
Different line.
Worth worth noting is that
Different use.
We do have some say over character and such in the P U D. And in terms of not warehouses, which make it much more difficult, but it's certainly in terms of manufacturing, in many cases, it might cost a little bit more, but there's a possibility of also doing a multi-story building. We're not just getting a one story spread out
That's kind of what I was thinking about.
Footprint and especially on uneven terrain that actually it might even be cheaper in some cases.
I don't, I understand the concept, I do not, I mean, it really doesn't matter because it's we can think about what someone's gonna do. I don't think that, I don't, practicality speaking, see multiple multi-level warehouse or industry operations of that size, because we actually spoke about that last meeting. Where's the, oh, what if it's three or four stories, I think Michael was discussing that, where it's, yeah, no, it's
Like, can they divide up their square footage or if we limit the square footage, can they do multi-level? But he was saying, no, they actually need this whole
Right, so if you do a warehouse and we'll use two hundred thousand, for example, it's like the likelihood of fifty thousand doll, uh fifty thousand square feet per floor in a four story, this is exaggeration, but a four story warehouse facility is unlikely.
What kind of warehouse facility versus manufacturing?
Yeah, I'm sorry, manufacturing, it's a lot easier to run
Depending on what you're manufacturing as well.
Well, he used, I think he said spoons or spatulas or something.
I don't remember.
You know, forklift up an elevator.
Right.
Yeah, anytime you're storing large, heavy things, multiple stories don't really work well. That's why it's really cheap to build sprawling
It is.
Square mile facilities on one level.
I'm I'm just thinking about the
Other parts of the country.
Terrain limitations, which actually might almost make it worth it.
I don't think we can rely on that.
No, we can't, I'm not saying, no, I I wasn't saying in a in a sense of assuming that's going to happen. But in terms of like going over a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand. I could imagine a scenario where that flexibility to a hundred and fifty thousand would be helpful and I I just, yeah. I I'm with Phil's original comment, I I don't want to get into the weeds of like all the different possible permutations. Hundred fifty sounds great.
You don't want to get into the weeds, John?
Hundred fifty thousand is still three acres of building.
Yeah, it's it's funny.
And are we thinking that for warehouse and industry or just industry?
I think warehouse and industry, like I think our definition of industry basically includes warehouse already. I was
No, our our definition of wholesale business includes warehouse, but we don't have, warehouse is not in our definition of industry.
It's not specific, but our our definition of industry does say storage of uh packing or other operations to goods, processing and packing of other, not storage, but processing or packing.
And we do also have truck terminal and warehouse as enumerated in the table of uses, but undefined currently.
And there are other, I mean, our our model language, we have, I'm I'm just looking down this list of business uses and there are things defined here that aren't in zoning already, like we don't define fitness center. I don't even know if we have boarding kennel, but like, I I think we can do some work to like tighten up this list to either match our existing uses of zoning, in zoning.
Well, so but we the the business uses allowed here intentionally aren't matching our zoning because it's supposed to be more expansive than our existing zoning.
Do we want it to be that? Like, if we're going to do that, we're we really need to consider adding those definitions to zoning, so if we're gonna add, like if we're gonna have a bill to say to accept the Tenny Mountain overlay district and add these definitions to the zoning ordinance, like you you can have one bill that does that. But I guess we're going to have to think about that, like, you know, yes, we're going to we're going to have these very specific uses that are not currently defined in zoning and part of the warrant article is going to say to include definitions for these terms.
I agree.
I suppose that's the most rigorous way to do it.
I think we have to, otherwise, like you have terms that are undefined.
Yeah.
I think so and and just working the this these documents throughout the future is
Yeah, that's true.
It's a little more rigorous now, but I think it'll will be beneficial in the future.
I don't disagree with anything I just said. I just I just do want to kind of step back for a moment to remind us all that one of the benefits of the P U D is that it allows a great deal of
Oversight.
Oversight from the planning board itself.
Yes.
And I am happy we have a really thorough one. But there are communities out there with P U Ds that are like a couple of pages long because it gives that authority to the board itself to be more flexible and that's part of the reason to be more flexible, and that's part of the reason that you go with the PUD is for that flexibility, as opposed to us having, like, standard zoning ordinance.
But is, but is the, is, is the understanding that we're going to be dealing with terms that are not defined in zoning, and they're up to the interpretation of the planning board when approving, when considering PUD applications?
No, this, this is why I said, I'm not really disagreeing with anything you just said.
No, I, I, I'm, I'm really asking just for clarity, I'm not, I'm not challenging anyone.
I, I, I guess I'm just thinking about this whole conversation, and warning against over-complicating a document, and overspecifying a document that's supposed to provide flexibility, both for the developer, but also for the board, to say what we really want, in, in specific circumstances that we can't necessarily foresee.
If we're gonna do that, I think we should have a, a general statement that addresses that, and says, this document is not as rigorously defined as the zoning ordinance, there may be terms that are not defined, and are left up to the interpretation of the planning board in consideration of applications to the PUD.
No, I, I think for the terminology, I'm actually, I'm, I'm on the same page.
You think we should, you think we should define it?
I, I, I think it's not a bad idea. I'm just referring to, like, the general kind of conversation we're having in the last, like, forty-five minutes now, about how specific we wanna be, and part of the benefit of this type of ordinance is that it does leave certain things a little bit looser. I think definitions are nice to have.
I, I think there are certain things, though, like, fitness center, like, we don't have fitness center in our current definitions, but we have fitness centers in town, we're allowing them under commercial use. Like, do we need to define it specifically? As a fitness center in the PUD?
The only reason I, I don't, I find this list to be helpful in terms of imagining, I mean, we have, we have commercial uses, which, which encapsulates everything from, you know, like, a shoemaker to a hairdresser.
Mm-hmm.
Um, at what point does that entail, does that, that phrase, "commercial use," encompass too many things?
I'm not sure that it, I'm not sure that it should.
Hmm.
I'm not sure that it can, honestly.
And so I can, I can see how this list is almost also guidance for the types of things we could, the community could potentially want to imagine.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
Right?
I agree, I agree.
So, in some ways, just collapsing them all into our existing definition of commercial use, where some of them might already live, isn't necessarily helpful when a potential developer's looking at this document and saying, okay, what's potent, what's possible here?
Yeah.
What do these people want to see here? What do they think is gonna be successful?
Yeah.
Tricky, tricky.
A sports complex, what would be the size of the building for that, say, and I don't even know what it's referring to? Would it's a hundred and fifty thousand square feet big enough? I, I don't, I don't know.
I certainly hope so, but you're, I, it's a good point, because there's indoor fields that could be quite large, yeah.
I don't know.
So there's some things that maybe should be defined more.
So, it depends on how big you want it to be, like, there's, there, there's a, there are two hockey rinks together, um, not, not far from that, uh, warehouse on three A, there's the, the Triton Ice Arena in, in Bow, where there's two rinks, and.
So there's plenty of room.
You know, in, it's not uncommon to have athletic fields, where you've got two or three indoor athletic fields, in a, in, you know, sometimes they're permanently, permanent structures, sometimes they're, uh, inflatable structures, where it's just kind of like a vinyl cover with pressure to keep it up, keep it up.
Mm-hmm.
Although there is something to be said, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking of, like, resort areas, where you often would do them in separate, smaller buildings, because it fits the character of the resort area better, than necessarily something along a kind of quasi-higher highway in Bow.
Again, as there's, there's some other, like, indoor sports complex in Bow, it's fairly large. Bow has all these places.
I, I will say, there's also, and, and there's also a facility in Marlboro, Mass, where there's ten indoor hockey rinks.
Ten?
And, ten.
Together?
Uh-huh, one, under one roof, the, the second floor is basically like, big open hallways, where you can walk, yeah.
We would not want that.
Just been there? Play there? Yeah, good. It's huge.
I live in Bow, where.
So, I, I mean, you know, there can be really big, there can be, there can be demand for very, like, I don't know another facility that has ten indoor hockey rinks in all of, all of New England, like, I, you know, I can think of a couple that might have three, but like, two, two is a lot.
Yeah.
Especially in this area, but like, I can think of areas, like, there are facilities down in Bow where they have indoor turf fields, and like, there's two in this building, and then you go outside, there's two in that building, and there's another building over here with two or three, so like, you know, we're not in an area that's gonna have that much demand, but I could see an indoor facility that has two athletic fields, side by side, or, or end to end, or something like that.
So, are, are you talking about, do we need to talk about the size in this document?
Yeah, well, I don't, I mean, if, if, if it's not limited, I mean, if we're not limiting it to manu- if it's not manufacturing, I mean, technically, the size of a sports complex could be unlimited, right?
Well, it, it could be, but, but to go back to, like, I'm thinking of other resort communities.
Yeah.
Um, again, they tend not to have these giant facilities, because it doesn't really fit the character of those resort communities, and that is kind of what the goal is here.
Yeah.
We're allowing things like manufacturing and warehousing, because it can help offset the capital needs of developing a facility like that, which is the only reason we're really even considering these things.
Right.
And ultimately, we want a nice Tenny Mountain recreational area, and I'm not sure you really need multiple attached ice rinks or something to get that, and if you look at most of those places that are nice, they have, like, a single ice rink or something.
Right.
Um, and I think that's okay.
And then again, there's also.
I've never met a developer that didn't want all his options.
Right.
On the other hand, we're, we're here to provide the limitations.
Right, right.
That is our, our job and something.
Well, and again, I, I keep calling back, section H, number two, the specific objectives, and all of these things to be considered, architectural design, placement of structures, mitigation of U ship, all that stuff, is, again, I really feel a very important element of, of, again, mitigating concerns that, the concerns that, the very legitimate concerns that we're talking about, is that there's also built-in to this document, very reasonable, very important limitations.
Yes.
To the uses themselves, so.
Just a note, oh, go ahead.
No, just a note to sports complex, we also, in our current zoning ordinance, define indoor recreation and outdoor recreation as uses, so perhaps we're thinking about sports complex, whether that, uh, is a useful additional term, or if it would be another one where some mirroring of what we already have, say, indoor or outdoor recreation could be just, keep it simpler.
Yeah.
Is that under recreation or indoor?
It's under recreation, I believe.
Might be, so it might be worth it in our deep study of the TMOD, to come through what definitions we have already, and how the ones in this list differ or relate, or if they're really, really close, um, compare the lists.
I think I'm on the same page, and I was one, I mean, I, I, in some ways, again, to go back where I was, I agree with much of what is being said, at the same time, I feel like we're, like, overthinking this, and really getting kind of lost in the details in some ways. And I wondered, Joseph, we can give you some homework, to try to reconcile some of the terminology.
Yeah.
Um, even further than we, I mean, we've done this already at, like, in previous passes, but even go a little deeper, reconcile some of the terminology in a way that seems reasonable, and reflects this conversation, and maybe, like, incorporate, I mean, is, does a hundred and fifty sound good to people, for the, for the size? And maybe incorporate that kind of chunking down of size, and I think it looks pretty good to go in many ways, otherwise. I think we're really kind of, again, getting a little bit lost in the weeds here.
Yeah. The value that I see is that if, if we do decide to put this towards the town, then we have a good understanding of what we're actually doing.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree.
But I agree with you, if Joseph is willing to do that, we love giving you homework, Joseph.
Happy to do it, happy to do it, especially when it involves making definitions align with other definitions.
Future is, are we giving Joseph homework, or are we giving?
The spirit of Frank lives on, at our meetings, even though he's not.
Regulatory alignment, right?
It can be, it can be designated as, as required.
Any other suggestions that people would like to see in this for the next iteration, moving forward?
I'll just make a quick note, uh, just worth, worth considering, uh, on the previous, unrelated, previous conversation. So in twenty twenty-three, the board did revise the site plan regulations, uh, and at that time, did adopt an entirely new, uh, stormwater set of regulations. Haven't been a great deal of developments using that new set of standards, uh, but that was something June had worked with Mike McNally on, um, to revise those, certainly never bad to look further. Uh, but the, the current set of standards is relatively new. Also worth noting that the subdivision regulations, which also have stormwater standards, haven't been updated since, uh, two thousand and two, uh, in the stormwater section.
I think we should, that should, that should be a priority for next year, I think.
Um, can I say just one thing, two, one last thing? I forgot that Judy, the genius she is, included a definition section in this, recommended amendments to Article Two. She includes boarding kennel, conference center, labor work units, recreational ski area. So she provided some definitions that we do not have in our zoning, that she did include in this list already.
All right. Thank you for finding that. Yes. I'm really, I'm very excited about this. I'm, I'm really optimistic that we can put this in front of voters this year. Um, I, I think we're doing a great job of sharpening our pencils and getting our heads around it, but I think this is gonna be a good thing for the town to consider.
And Joseph, can I just ask a clarification? Since you brought it up about, and I know I was part of those conversations, and it's, like, completely, like, went through my brain like a sieve. So our upgrade, our updated stormwater guidelines, um, I imagine they were meant to make it more rigorous, and bring it up to date with current, like, storm statistics and, and stuff like that, which are vastly different than they were like twenty years ago. And they weren't just updated to streamline it for developers, I would presume, from my memory of this. Can you have, do you have any more details, like?
Yeah, I can definitely.
I know, it's been a concern, so.
Yeah, I can give a little more detail, for sure, so I think one issue was redevelopment didn't typically require stormwater mitigation, um, so the, the regulations put a threshold in place, redevelopment over a certain size, required stormwater mitigation and a drainage plan. All new development now requires a drainage, an engineered drainage analysis, if it's subject to site plan review, and it has to show, um, that it meets. Let me just double-check the exact, uh, storm event here, but generally speaking, an engineered drainage plan showing that, does not exceed, control the post-development peak runoff rate, so that does not exceed pre-development runoff for two, ten, or twenty-five-year design storm at each discharge point, and compare pre- and post-development runoff. System slash pond overflows shall be designed to accommodate the one-hundred-year design storm runoff rates, and stormwater volume control shall mitigate the increase in the post-development runoff volume to infiltrate the groundwater recharge volume.
If I recall correctly, we didn't have a hundred-year storm in the previous version?
That's correct, and the, I think the previous only went up to ten, and I'm just double-checking this, but I think the subdivision regulations, uh, also only go up to ten-year storm, and I think that was the, the major concern with the stormwater regs as they existed in site plan, that they really didn't, um, yeah, that's right, so subdivision regulations still, as they were written in two thousand and two, only require treatment of, or no increase in runoff at the ten-year event, whereas site plan review regulations were made considerably, uh, I would say, more rigorous than they were before in that.
So even, so even there are potentially some of those developments, like Walmart, which have become a problem.
We're probably under.
Pre.
We're under the pre, the old regulations, which, they, they might just not pass muster today anyway.
And you could have, you could always look at whether this could be more rigorous, I mean, I'm sure there are examples out there that are more. It is, you know, it is interesting that the subdivision regulations still only require going preset the ten, that is unusual.
Um, so sorry, site plan review, no increase at the hundred is now?
So, showing that there's no increase at the two, ten, and twenty-five, and that system pond overflows can accommodate the one-hundred-year.
Okay.
And then that also requires engineered drainage plans for pretty much all large-scale developments, all new and some.
I appreciate that information. It might be interesting, and, and when we have more time, like, later or something, to, not later today, but, to, you know, do a quick comparison of some other communities, and see what they're, they're up to, but it sounds like we're headed in the right direction, at least.
The other thing to consider is that, I mean, when I first started in planning, I was really concerned about the fact that, you know, these were all based on, you know, the ten-year storm, the fifty-year storm, the hundred-year storm, and, and the frequency of these storms is actually changing, but, um, they're actually redefining those, the magnitude of those storms based on more recent data, and, and I think they're looking forward at, you know, poten- you know, an envi- a situation where we may see a higher intensity of storms like this. If, if I recall that, when I, when I lived in Bradford, there were three hundred-year storms in eighteen months, which is.
Three, one hundred years.
I, I can remember three one-hundred-year storms in a short period of time.
Yeah, it was like two thousand and three.
Yeah.
Two thousand and two, two thousand and three, and so like, by definition, a hundred-year storm is the storm that happens once every hundred years over a long period of time, so to have three in eighteen months is clearly like, an abnormal data point for that long dataset. Uh, but yeah, those, those are being redefined, which gives me more faith in the fact that we can rely on the hundred-year storm, because the standard is going to change over time as well.
Every year, we get more and more impervious surfaces to.
But I mean, the whole point of these plans is that even with more impervious surfaces, they're, they're not, we're not allowing more off-site runoff during these storms. I mean, yeah, a five-hundred-year storm, you might see an increase in runoff, if it's designed for the hundred-year storm, but.
We might be worried about other things.
I think we'd all be swimming.
I think we could use, we could use one right now, with dry, we could probably use like a week or what, a week.
I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna five-hundred-year storm, but I do want the water.
Yeah, it's dry now, for sure.
A Tenny Mountain Highway is designed for a hundred-year storm.
The road itself is?
Yeah, I think, I think it is.
Yeah, it was a military road, it was set up, wasn't it, basically, wasn't it?
I, I think. Our zoning ordinance calls for, everything has to be at or above a hundred-year storm, with, where FEMA is concerned.
Well, moving on from Tenny Mountain Overlay District, if everyone is good with that topic for tonight?
Yeah. I was gonna say, there are some people in the audience, I was wondering if they were interested in this.
Some of them are my victims.
Have you thought about Bow?
Thank you.
You don't have to talk, you don't want to, you guys.
But we greatly appreciate it.
Joseph, do you wanna roll us into the next bit of tonight?
Yep, I'll just give a little bit of a, a, a circling back to that. So, the planning board also briefly discussed, um, the zoning changes, the potential zoning amendment related to state law changes. One of those involved changing the special exception criteria for first-floor, ground-floor residential uses in village commercial. That prompted a discussion of the, the requirements that would remain if we took out the two that are now no longer legal. Um, one of those being, the facade, including windows, shall be residential in character, and I think there was some question about whether that was really the, the direction that the, that the zoning had intended, ground-floor residential in the village commercial to go, so we, we discussed, um, some of the design attributes that can, in many ways, characterize the commercial core of a main street, and the packet, at the board's request. I gave some examples of, um, some different buildings that have different physical, pliable characteristics that might make them feel more or less appropriate in a village commercial core setting. Now, whether the board wants to regulate those by changing the special exception criteria, instead of saying that it shall be residential in character, if the board wants to replace that with some more specific standards that get at some of the other design characteristics, that help to define that commercial village core feel, uh, that is a possibility, though simply complying with the law would leave us with two additional special exception criteria still in place, which, there's nothing that says that we have to change that now, but I do think the fact that we're reducing it from four to two does prompt a little bit of scrutiny of those two, but doesn't mean we have to change those. Just a little bit of a follow-up from that conversation with some examples, and, um, also the Main Street Plymouth Design Guidelines, which were a voluntary, uh, set of design guidelines adopted in nineteen ninety-nine by the Main Street Plymouth Group. And these were non-binding, they were not a, a mandate, they were not out of zone. And these were non-binding, they were not a mandate, they were not out of zoning. But at that time, many of the business owners in the village commercial core agreed that they would abide by these voluntarily to help create a certain look in the village core. I think over the years, perhaps, that they haven't always been observed, they were never binding. But many businesses have tried to keep kind of in line with these. So they, they also provide some interesting examples. And then just a couple of other pieces of information in the packet about kind of ground floor in a commercial core generally and what it means when that can convert from residential to retail and vice versa. So just, just kind of some follow-up information. And really the, the question is, you know, we don't need to address any of this to comply with the law. But we could, since we're already changing a part of those criteria.
I think it makes sense to consider those.
Yep. Yeah, what is everyone's appetite on this? Consider it?
Well, we talked about waiting for more information from the Shorette when we started getting into the weeds about this kind of thing. I'm, I, I do want to do that, but I'm also of the mind that if, in some ways, I want to just get rid of all four of these because I don't think the remaining two are helpful in any way. But at the same time, if we just leave, if we just get rid of F at all, I can see the benefit of having some kind of guidance remain in some way. But I'm on the fence about it.
Right, because we have the shred right around the corner.
Right, exactly.
Which will help drive some better informed decisions.
Correct.
That's where I'm torn as well.
So I, I guess my, my thought is, and perhaps you can provide guidance, Joseph. I mean, for me, the goal is whatever ends up being on the ground floor should be pedestrian friendly. And that can mean a, a frontage that looks residential. It could mean one that looks commercial on a residential property. It could just mean that's a door and a window or something.
But like door doesn't open up into the sidewalk.
Well, I mean, and that, that's actually an interesting one because often for a means of egress, you have to be able to push it out rather than pull it in. For, for fire safety.
We have the alcoves.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Exactly.
Just for that reason, the pedestrian aspect of it.
So.
It's no removal, so you don't have to push it out now?
It, I, I don't know if a criteria is must be pedestrian friendly, right? But like I think that's the goal and that can look like many different things. What we don't want is just like this flat brick wall.
I mean, that is one of the.
Example.
Yeah, that is one of the goals, but I do think there's an aesthetic goal as well.
I'm, I'm actually thinking more about like the residential appearance for commercial buildings. And like it's, it's not what we're talking about, but like when you, I don't know, like my, my brain keeps going there instead.
The residential use of commercial buildings?
Well, like the, the, there, there are commercial uses of buildings that appear to be residential. So think, think about like Sixburner Brook East Row. Like it's clearly an old house that's been converted to a restaurant. It looks residential, but like we're talking about the opposite, right? We're, we're talking about a residential use of commercial space that we want it to be fitting? Like I'm trying to think about examples of this where, that are already in town that we can.
Here's, here's an interesting kind of counter example to this.
Yeah.
If you ever like go to Littleton, which many of you probably have.
Yep.
Walk around and look at some of the.
Like on Main Street, you're thinking?
Some of the wonderful, yeah, like Main Street, Littleton, there's some wonderful design buildings, and it's some really bad ones. And they're all mixed in together.
Yeah.
And even the poorly designed buildings aren't really bothersome because of streetscaping as a whole ties everything together really well. And I'm not saying we should allow poor buildings to be built. But I, I'm, I am saying that, A, I don't want to be overly strict about what a good building looks like and put in overly strict design guidelines that everything looks like a cookie cutter like. I'm gonna put a little like dent on this somewhere because like I need an articulation in my whatever. But don't read into whatever. And I, I think an important thing for Plymouth to think about, if we're really concerned with the walkability of our downtown, is yes, what our buildings look like, but also how we tie everything together through streetscaping, which Littleton has done really well. And they put a lot of effort into. And it somehow allows the eye to gloss over some of those kind of ugly buildings.
Can you talk about streetscaping more? Like what is it about the, what do you mean by streetscaping?
Like interesting, like Littleton doesn't have any like trees on its main street.
Yeah, it doesn't, that's true.
But it does have beautiful planters and really nice lighting at a consistent interval, trash cans. And, and various other features like this. It has a lot of the signage, as we, as we do in Plymouth as well, in certain parts of Main Street more than others. The signage that kind of bumps out over the sidewalk.
Yep.
Which really defines the pedestrian space on the sidewalk and is readable by pedestrians as opposed to on the building signage, which is more car oriented. And a lot of those little choices, it gets down really well.
Yeah, John, they're starting to utilize the backsides of their buildings by the river.
They are, they are, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's kind of funky.
It is. It's kind of exciting back there.
It is. There's the brewery along the river and there's all those little shops on the backside, yeah.
So I've been trying to think about examples of, of like buildings that might be like a residential use of a commercial building. And like the one that comes to, to mind is like, I think the Plymouth Furniture Building has been for sale for a while. It would be really easy, easy for somebody to buy that and say, alright, we're putting apartments in. Like what if they just leave the glass, like they've got storefront windows there, like.
What do you mean, which buildings?
From the furniture.
Family furniture.
It's right across from the, the D and M building.
Places for sale?
Yeah, they've been trying to sell it.
I think they've been trying to sell it for a while. And I think, I think there's first floor retail and second floor like warehouse or, like it could easily be two-story apartments. Townhouse type things, you know. I'm trying to think about like, alright, this, this, this statewide change would allow a developer to say, I'm buying that building. It's going to be housing, when it wouldn't have been allowed in the past. So, you know, how do we want our zoning to shape how buildings like that are treated? Can they just leave the, the glass storefront windows and paint them black and live on the inside? Or like what, what do you do with those? Like, you know, it was clearly built as retail space, but if it's going to be used as residential, what's our zoning do to, to treat that conversion?
Yep, that's a good point.
You see what I mean?
Yeah, Joseph.
I've been try, I've been struggling with the concept of like where, put one in practice. How do, how do we understand, like it's not specific to that building, but like there, there could be other places like, yeah. There could be anywhere on Main Street, it could happen. And I'm just thinking, that one's been for sale and like it would be really easy for a developer to want to put housing in there.
Joseph included an article in our emailed packet that talks about this. It's a, from an urban perspective, but there's design guidelines in it from, it's from San Francisco, so very different context. But says modular facades and delineate individual ground floor entrances at twenty-five foot intervals. Create setbacks greater than six feet to enable usable transition spaces between an entrance and the street. Raise the residential first floor level to a minimum of three feet with stairs or a step to create separation between public and private space and prevent passerby's from peering through the windows. Design protected and identifiable entryways such as recessed entries. Our favorite thing. Define setbacks and incorporate landscaping elements such as porch's patios and landings and incorporate screening elements. So, yeah. Fences, railings, gates, planters. Those are the types of things I suppose we could consider if we want, like if, if we're imagining a conversion of commercial into residential. We could look at this.
Which is what we are now required to allow.
Right, right. So we could consider these special exception criteria, or we could.
Although some of these are hard to achieve in an adaptive reuse.
Absolutely, yeah.
And I think that's another point here is if you look at example sort of A in the packet and B, right? There's a couple of specific features that, you know, there's a lot of features you can obviously differentiate between these two buildings, right? But a couple of the key ones that differentiate these two examples are things like a clear delineation between the upper story and the street level facade, recessed entrances, large windows, exposed or visible lighting features, horizontal and vertical rhythmic rhythm in some of the design elements, and also use of three colors. Are, are kind of key design pieces that if you were looking at a new build that were to have some of these features. Those are things you might have required to bring about this building. Not to say those should be necessarily individually special exception criteria, but those are a couple of specific examples that you see in this example that you don't see in the, in the bulky sort of monolithic example of the.
What was the one right before the colors, the three colors?
There was the, the.
Rhythm of horizontal and vertical?
Oh yeah, the rhythm of horizontal and, horizontal and vertical design elements. So that's sort of your window placement with respect to each other, your sort of balance between the sides of the building.
Door, window.
As opposed to having, you know, a small window and a big flat, you know, monolithic expanse. It, it's, you know, again, each of these independently are things that are often required of new buildings to achieve this kind of design. Doesn't mean they're necessarily going to translate great to a conversion, but they're things to think about because you could also be looking, as we saw with, you know, the, the Flying Monkey example. There could be a scenario where a new build also wants to have ground level retail or residential. And that, that's another side of it. So it's, it's worth thinking about both of those sides of the coin because as written currently, upstairs residential is, is permitted, but on the street level, you do need a special exception, whether it's a new build or a conversion. Those are a couple of key pieces.
Phil, you said something, we have to allow that. So we do allow that by special exception. So the state hasn't changed anything that we have to do.
Didn't, isn't this change that we have to allow it by right?
We do have to allow it by right, but you are allowed to require ground floor commercial. So the, the key is that we allow upstairs residential, or upstairs multifamily by right. The towns are not required to allow ground floor residential by right, that is a local option.
Okay. Well, that's good.
So can I just, I mean.
Appreciate that clarification.
We're not the first community to confront the issue, especially in the last few years, of the reuse of commercial real estate for residential real estate. And we don't necessarily have to reinvent the wheel here. Can we borrow from someone and?
Yes and no, I would say, because I think a lot of examples that are out there really are geared towards new construction, to be honest. I, I think a lot of these standards.
Even with all the adaptive reuse lately and?
I'm sure there are some. I, I don't doubt, you know, adaptive reuse ordinances as they've been adopted. I think it would require some rethinking of this blunt instrument kind of of a special exception for ground floor residential, which really only allows you, you could add specific additional criteria. But some of the other tools may not, you know, other towns that have adopted more of a form-based code or, or greater form and design regulations writ large. I have not seen, and I have done a little bit of research, but I have not seen anywhere they've been applied specifically to special exception criteria. Doesn't mean they're not out there, they're, they probably are. And as you said, this is not an uncommon trend around.
I mean, could, could a special exception criteria be given that the zoning board has a little bit of leeway for interpretation? Something as broad as like fits the character of like, not, not necessarily immediately adjacent properties, but like of, of the current neighborhood or, which, which is really vague.
I don't think the zoning board appreciates interpretation. I think they're trying to get away from that. You know, I think that's because everyone's different.
It's, it's just so hard because there are so many different ways of achieving this, that it's hard to really be very specific.
Well, I think, I, I just think they would really appreciate a little more.
And we can remove the special exception, you know, we don't have to, we can leave it broad right now. We don't have to build, build the backup.
Yeah, as, as you said, we could, we don't even have to have additional special exception criteria.
Right.
We could just have the standard.
I would propose that we get rid of twelve oh four, three F.
So instead of having any sort of special exception, we have?
There are no, I, I'm proposing getting rid of the four extra criteria for a special exception.
Yep. So there's still a special exception criteria, just the standard ones.
Right.
Right.
I think that would.
That works for me.
Makes sense?
Yeah.
Do we continue to have the conversation about, about adaptive reuse policies or anything like that? Or we do not just, do we just not worry about it?
I think we build that into potential of the Shorette.
I, I'm, I'm thinking to myself. Anything that gets, anything, I'm thinking to all of us, myself, right? Anything that gets reused is going to be already designed for a use downtown, which by its very nature at this point would be a commercial use or, or specifically from the get-go as a special exception and a residential use. So it's probably not going to have the problem of being a like really poor looking facade just by the nature of what our current regulations say about what you can build. And I'm not sure you're going to prevent someone from just blacking out like a window. And yeah, I, I, so I, I, I mean, I guess I'm saying, I think that some of the worst case scenarios, probably an adaptive reuse, aren't going to happen because if it's an old building, it already exists anyway. And if it's a newer building, you have to build it to meet commercial standards anyway. So I, I, I'm okay with removing the special exception criteria.
Can I?
It's a long way of saying that, sorry.
Expand on this a little bit, since we're discussing three oh four point one. So it says in the village commercials on residential uses are permitted or above or below the street level only. Residential uses on the street level are permitted only by special exception. I think, I recall we had discussed in the past inserting main into street level.
We had.
And, and I still think that's a good idea.
I don't disagree.
So, what's that?
I don't disagree.
So the way it would affect things is that, you know, currently, you know, think about Railroad Square. They, they put housing units on there and they did put parking under there, but they might have done that because they didn't want to go for a special exception where they might have had first floor residential on first floor in that area and just had parking alongside the buildings.
It was for flooding purposes.
And it might be. I mean, and there might be other reasons, but like, you know, there's, there's, there are buildings on Chase Street. So, which is, Chase Street comes down between Beederman's and Hong Kong Garden and goes, basically the Rand's parking lot is Chase Street, right? Like, so currently it says there's no first floor residential there, but it could, like if, if we said, if we made the modifications so that first floor residential is not allowed on Main Street level, then there could be, there could be residential units under Main Street level. Like off Chase Street.
That's not a flood zone.
True. So it could, it could work there. But I, I, like if we're, if we're doing this, can we package this change to insert main into that street level? And that would allow some, some additional flexibility for housing in that area.
So my, my thought would be yes, and probably not this year, because we're thinking about it very late in the process. And because we're doing this Shorette, which might cause, who, who knows what that'll lead to? And maybe some people will want to expand that into part of that area as well.
Yep.
Maybe, maybe we won't. But maybe once that's over, we can start thinking about that for next year and like how exactly we define that within the village commercial. I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Alright, let's put that off until.
I don't want to like lose that.
I think it would prejudge the input of the public that we're going to get in the Shorette to make that change now.
Alright, that sounds good. Perfect.
Joseph, what are remind me, like six, six months from now or something?
Yeah.
Alright, any other discussion about this particulars on the moment? I think we can do a good agreement for that. Alright, if there's no further discussion, we will wrap up zoning amendments for tonight, if everyone's good with that.
We have no public or.
We will move on to public comment. Is there anyone online?
Claire is online.
There is someone online.
Yeah, it's my sister.
I am online, but I have no comment at this time.
Alrighty, sounds good.
I'm so disappointed.
I found one last time, Phil, you weren't there?
Yes, you did. Yes, she did. Alright, if there's no other public comments, any other questions, comments, concerns from anyone here tonight?
I move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Obseined? Objections, opposed?
Hey.